I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name's Darlene Mercer Bruin, City Council, Ward 5. I'm chairing tonight's meeting for Alderman, uh, City Councilor Gaitley, who's not feeling well, and we sent him some get well wishes and hope he'll get back here soon. So, the members of the, the sitting members of the committee include City Councilor Campbell, City Council Viola, City Council DeMambro. And the first item on our agenda tonight is in regards to a special permit that was issued with, uh, the Committee on Special Permits meet with Garage 42 Degrees relative to compliance with conditions of a special permit at 20 to 30 Sonar Drive. And I believe this was filed by City Councilor Gaitley due to some, uh, butter complaints. City Councilor Gaitley, as you know, is not here, but I understand there's a member of the city council who is familiar with this, so I'm gonna ask the Special Permits Committee to provide me with a motion that we open this up to the entire city council.
Like to make a motion to allow this to, the full city council to speak on this matter?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Having said that, I'm gonna turn this over to City Councilor Dylan.
Thank you, Councilor Bruin. I, I guess we can start out, um, perhaps, uh, the simplest and easiest way, and maybe save some time, is if we could ask the petitioner, the owner of the property down below, a simple couple questions, if I may.
Please, you have the floor.
Um, do you understand what the abut is requesting for you folks to do?
I'm just gonna ask, where is the general, could you please approach, sir? Thank you. And if you could just speak into the mic and please provide your name and address for our clerk.
Yeah, Dave Banforth, and then home address, I assume?
Yep.
Uh, 70 Howard Street, Somerville, Mass.
And if there's any questions, please direct them to the council, not to anyone in the audience. Councilor Dylan, you have the floor again.
Thanks for coming tonight and seeing if we can work this out quick, quickly and easily. So, that's why I ask these questions, rather than dive right in there. I think you're familiar with what the abutters, the swimmers are requesting for you to do at this point.
Yeah, correct.
Are you in agreement to do that?
Um, uh, uh, I, I think some of the things we were, were open to doing, um, some would be probably cost prohibitive to, to do.
Okay.
But we're, we already were, um, offered to take care of cleaning the house or, or any cars that are needed. Um, but any of the third-party engineering review, I, I don't feel is needed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Any of the third-party engineering review, I, I don't feel is needed.
Okay, so, and again, I'm just trying to make this go quickly and perhaps easily. If not, we'll dive right into it. Um, you, you do not feel comfortable with having an engineer's opinion on what was done if it jeopardizes or compromises that slope that abuts daily?
Um, I, I, I'm open to it happening, it's more just a cost implication.
Okay, so you don't wanna pay for the engineer's, uh, work to be done, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then, at that point, I think, um, we should move forward and try to get the council and work something out. I was hoping that we could, uh, say, one, two, and three are gonna be agreed on and send everyone off in their merry way, but let's get into it.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can provide more background on the engineering work that was done.
Um.
I think, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Sure.
Um, if you could give us just a synopsis, the, the, the special permit team and everybody else here.
Sure. Um, I actually have some printouts that I can hand out if, if that works.
Motion to accept, make, compile to the permanent record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are mine. These documents. Um, so while those are being handed out, I, I can give some more background on the work that was completed.
Wait for the clerk to finish, please.
Thank you, Gordon.
Yep.
You don't need to go through the whole report, sir, you can just give us the highlights as it relates to the swi, the swimmers' concerns.
Okay, is, is there a spare one? I'll actually keep one possible, thanks. Yeah, so the, uh, the top document is a memo from the company that did the work. The company that did the work is called Geo Stabilization International. They're a national leading company that, that performs this work. They perform thousands of jobs a year with hundreds of employees, and, and they're unique in the fact that they do design-build. So, they are both the engineering experts for the job, and they perform the work themselves. And they have contracts where they've worked with DOT departments throughout the nation, from Colorado to Tennessee to Vermont, and they work with mines, large institutions, and, and they're really one of the leaders within the, within the country, if not North America, performing this type of work. And, uh, it, it's kind of a unique nature, the fact that they are design-built, so they have thirty-plus engineers in-house, and both geotechnical engineers and mechanical engineers, who, uh, do the evaluations of rock slopes. They recognize issues or concerns, and then they also design the mitigation to be put in place. And, uh, this first document is a memo that we got from them, uh, kinda showing the trees that were removed along the top of the cliff, and, and kind of highlighting, uh, their response into the soil instability that might've been caused by that tree removal. And as you can see in the, in the memo, in the, on the first page, in the last paragraph, they mentioned vegetation was removed above grade as to not disturb the existing soil slope or modifies susceptibility of slope to future erosion. And, so, they feel that the, the trees that were moved from the top of there did not produce any, any additional risk of, of erosion. And you can also see in some of the photos, sorry, they're in black and white, I tried to print them in color, but it was not, not gonna happen. And, the, there was already a, a band of about fifteen feet of where trees were cleared below the Jersey barriers, and then the trees below those are the ones that they removed. And you can see this as you flip through the, the photos, the trees that were there and then the trees that weren't. And, I guess that's the first, uh, kind of document. And then there's the second document, which shows the as-built plans. You can see that these plans, um, are stamped by a, by a licensed engineer, uh, by a professional engineer, and they highlight the mitigation that they designed and the plan for installation. And this shows, uh, as this is an as-built plan, they went back and revised the plan to show the actual work that was done. And you can see on page three of this plan, it shows, um, eight points where they drilled and put anchors in to connect to cable, that then they draped a hundred feet of mesh from. And then you can also see, uh, one, two, three, four, five locations marked with triangles or, or diamonds where they drilled in fifteen to twenty feet and put one-inch anchor bolts in that they grounded in to help stabilize any larger rock that they thought was at risk of falling. And then they hung that net, and that net was really to provide, so if any smaller debris was to fall, the net keeps it from flying off and potentially, you know, bouncing off part of the wall and then hitting someone, injuring someone, or damaging the property below. And, so I think these two, two documents clearly kind of highlight the, the amount of engineering work that was done into this, and the fact that the, the engineers involved didn't feel that any, any negative, uh, uh, effect was done by, by the mitigation that was put in place.
All right. And, and thank you for this. The, the one issue with it is now there appears to be some concerns by some folks who actually know a little bit about building, the, the folks that have complained, right? And this report was done by an engineer that you paid for, right? And, and I know that it's certified plans and they put their name on it, but it sounds like we're gonna need to get some level of comfort for some of the concerns that have been outlined, okay? That can be done in a couple of different ways. Before I go over those, I wanna open it up for anybody who has questions. And I am gonna open it up for the swimmers if they want to come up and speak. I'm gonna limit the, that, that to about five minutes because we've got a lot of people waiting for interviews. This is not a public hearing, it's a public meeting. But one of the things I'm gonna suggest that the conversation, be part of the conversation when you meet with the swimmers, again, which you will do, is to talk about a peer review of this, not necessarily a, a whole new engineering report, that's one of my suggestions, I don't know how Mr. Swimer feels about that. But that's, that's one, one suggestion. Now, in terms of the other things that are listed in here, and the cleanup of the rubbish and some of those other things, obviously, that's not a problem, right?
Uh, the rubbish, and it, I think is difficult to clean up, in part because we'll need to, to have someone with the proper safety gear to do that. The contract for this work is not locally based, so they would likely have to fly someone in to do that and reset up their connection points. And, and none of the trash is, is up there, was stuff that they had left behind. They, they did a very thorough job of cleaning up after themselves. They removed some trash that was up there, and you can see in, in some of those photos that we were taking that there was quite a lot of pipe. And there, it's also hard to see in the photo, but there was a trash can too.
I can't tell, it's black and white, I can't tell, but.
Yeah, and the second photo.
So, you're suggesting there was a lot of stuff before you even started the work?
Yeah, yeah, you can see in the second photo, you can see on the left side, uh, several pieces of pipe, and, and, cause it's black and white, it's hard to see the trash can, but, but there was some, some cleanup that was done of larger debris. And there was some smaller trash that was already up there that was left behind, you know, bottles, cans, that kind of thing. And I believe there was maybe some Christmas trees, and, and that stuff did not get, get cleaned up. But they cleaned up everything that they brought up and any of the, uh, any evidence of the work that they completed.
Okay. So, if there's no questions from the council, I'm gonna ask for a motion, um, you can step aside, sir.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to open this up to the public for, um, about five minutes or so, so we can hear from the, the swimmers.
A second.
Do you have that, and a motion to?
Make a motion to open it up to the public.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Mark, how are you?
How's everybody?
And I, and I thank you for understanding about the time limit.
No, no problem.
So, can you give us your?
The base, uh, we really don't have a problem with the net he hung, and I really don't care about the engineering, and if the net falls down, it falls down on him, someone gets hurt, it's his problem, okay? The guys who worked up there were very nice, they were told not to talk to me when they first started. For what reason, I don't know, okay? All I want is the yard to be stabilized, that's all I'm looking, I'm not looking for anything else. I don't even care if he cleans my house or my cars now, I'm tired of the whole thing, it's been going on for weeks now.
Is that an issue? For, so, your, your house is dirty?
My house did get covered with all this dust from when he, and I actually allowed his workers to put a trailer of water in my yard to keep the dust down. But I like I told guys they couldn't come in my yard, it was very nice to the guys. They wouldn't, uh, by the end, they were nice to me, but when I first confronted them, they said, "We were told not to talk to the man or the woman who lives here." And that, that's not right. Someone should've notified that something was gonna happen. Gail calls me at seven, seven-thirty in the morning and says, "This guy's cutting the trees out behind the fence."
Yeah, it was shocking, it was shocking.
My, my neighbor next door calls me a week later, there's a crane with a, a blaster's drill hanging over my yard to drill holes. We just wanna know what's going on.
Of course.
Like I said, I don't care, the net's up, the net's up. If it falls down, it's his problem. I have no problems with him either. It's just above the net is the fifteen, twenty feet, that all the gra, everything gets stripped off by when they were working there. And there's pieces of fence that were hanging on the cliff that they left behind. Yes, and maybe I threw the Christmas trees over there, so birds and stuff would live in it, cause it is a bird sanctuary up there. And it, I don't know if he knows, but the birds like to live in old Christmas trees and wreaths and stuff. I'm just doing my best up there.
So, just so I understand, what's above the net, you wanna make sure that whole thing isn't coming down?
Correct.
Right, it's stable and it's safe.
Just wanna stabilize it.
Right.
There's many ways to stabilize it, I, you know, if he doesn't wanna get an engineer, that's fine, come up with an idea to stabilize it, that works for me, works for me. Or, and my wife, of course, too. I gotta go home tonight.
Okay. Are there any questions, City Council DeMambro?
So, I was up there, Mark. I, uh, I walked that whole site, I took pictures. My concern with that's, that site is that it's very loose now. There's no shrubges, there's nothing anchoring, the dirt, the dust. You're up on a mountaintop, I'm sure it gets real breezy up there, it was breezy the day I was up there. I was pretty much four feet from the edge. My concern is, we get the hundred-year storm, if things are gonna wash down that hill, as well as, once it starts washing, the erosion that could occur that will then affect your property that's, I would say, probably fifteen feet from the edge. So, that is my concern, and I, I would ask that the committee look at some sort of, or, or have, um, the, 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 the person that, that engineered this have some sort of shrubbery or something to anchor that and, and to keep it in place so that it doesn't, in time, erode down, causing.
Right, like a geo grid or something.
Like a geo grid of some sort, of, with.
Tubular, you know.
That's, you know, environmentally, you know, safe and savvy for, for the, for the birds and the wildlife. So, I want us to all keep that into consideration, because I was there and it, it is a concern. Thank you.
And for me, it's, I feel it's very unsafe. I don't like looking out there, I don't like looking behind my house and seeing a drop of a hundred and twenty feet when there was trees, and I mean, if anyone goes over there, you're gonna, you're gonna die. I mean, I understand his safety to protect his building, but now, we don't have any safety from the top. If you look down there, everybody up there has trees behind their home. Nobody, anybody in here would ever cut those trees down.
Gail, up here, yeah.
And not, and not, and, and you just wouldn't do it.
Right.
It's just unsafe. If you had children, if I was to sell my house tomorrow and someone came up there and looked behind my yard and had children, they would walk away, as I would.
Right.
Because it makes me sick every time I look out my back window now.
Got it. Anybody else?
It's very upsetting to me.
Councilor DeMers.
Were there, were there any commitments during the, um, impetus of this, or the beginning of this? Was there, was there any commitments in terms of maintaining a buffer zone with any types of trees or bushes or anything like that?
What do you, what time, time?
So, when, when, when this was all being discussed originally?
No one ever discussed it. We just, it just happened one day.
Okay.
No, no one came up and told us anything about this.
To the chair, to, um, Alderman DeMers, what we have, and if I could ask for it to be part of the permanent record, on the petition for the special permit dated October 14th, Exhibit A, I'm not gonna read the entire Exhibit A, what I will read is the last line, "The new building will have less of an impact on the buffer zone than the existing building as shown on the plan filed herewith." What that means is, the new building obviously is at the base of the cliff, so if it's gonna have less of an impact, you certainly wouldn't, on the buffer zone, you certainly would not, without regard, go up top and clear the buffer zone. And then if we jump over to the second item, November 16th, the minutes of the meeting, 2021, the, um, owner of the building's engineer, Mr. Mahoff, and again, I'm not gonna read the entire, uh, page, I'm gonna read what I think is, for lack of a better term, the meat and potatoes of it. Mr. Mahoff stated that the building is moving away from the west wall twenty foot to the east, which will allow for a bigger setback with the ledge face and residential area higher above, which, again, the residential area higher above is the swimmers' property. So, that's where I'm coming from, that this should be in front of us, and it's our job to look after the abutters based on the permit that we approved on both those occasions.
Thank you, Councilor Dylan. Councilor Viola, did you have any comments?
Um, just, I feel the same way as Councilor Dylan, that the swimmer should be made whole after this. I've seen the pictures of the site, and if I was living there, I wouldn't be happy at all either with having, looking out my backyard, that big drop-off there.
It is, it's scary, I don't like it at all, it just bothers me, I just, we just want it safe.
Absolutely, and I agree.
Councilor Camp, oh, are you done? Sorry, Chuck.
I'd like to, um, add that I'd like to, um, make both documents that Councilor Dylan brought up, uh, part of the permanent record.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Campbell?
Yeah, um, Mr. Swimer, Mrs. Swimer, um, where does your property end? Is it, does it end right at your fence, or does it go out several feet beyond the fence?
It depends on where you're looking in the yard.
Okay, where?
I've told a lot of people, I've told a lot of people this, when I moved in twenty-four years ago, getting on twenty-five now, there were, and I have a couple pictures if you guys wanna look at them, there was an old dilapidated fence, barbed wire, all vines and weeds pulling it down. At least once a month, the fire department and the police department come up and rescued kids from the other side. I think, I think Devil was mayor, or Curran was mayor at the time, and I called up and said, "Will you come replace this fence?" At the time, Gail was pregnant, I said, "No, my kid's gonna be climbing over here." They said, "The city won't replace that fence." I think, I think Dicky might've been Alderman then told, and he said, "The city won't replace the fence, Mark, you can put the fence back exactly where it is, whatever method you want, to, to make that hill safe." If, if you want, I can, I can give you some pictures to pass around.
No, 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 I just want, I just want to know how far out from, from the fence is your yard? Once you, if you climbed over the.
It depends on what part, it depends on what part of my yard you come in.
Okay.
Okay? Some parts, it's on the property line, okay? Some parts, the property line's in a few feet from the fence. I replaced the fence where it was, at my own cost.
So, if I jumped over that fence and hit the ground on the other side, any of that property yours?
Anywhere on that, you're not gonna be, if you go on the other side of that fence, you won't be on my property.
Will not, okay.
Will not be on my property.
All right, that, that's what I was asking, yeah, okay.
And we're well aware of that, we're well aware that it isn't.
Yeah, okay. Because it, it, it is a shame that they cut the trees down. Obviously, you can't, um, it's not something that can be replaced easily, but it seems like, you know, new types of trees or something, um.
Something to keep it safe, I mean, it's a drop.
Yes, should be able to be put, but I have no idea, I mean, I, I happen to be a gardener and it, I don't know how much soil is actually up there, but, um, I know, um, Alderman DeMambro, you talked about a geo grid, what is that?
It would be some sort of a, like bushes and shrubs to hold that in place, that the rooting system kinda goes under the ground, not too deep into the ground, but it, and it locks it all together so that if there is a rain, it not only absorbs some of the rain, but it also holds everything in place so it doesn't go down the mountain.
And what would that go out, like ten feet or so, before it?
It, it all depends on how, how you wanna engineer it and how far.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, could you please step up here? So, I'm gonna ask my fellow committee members for a motion to have you meet with the swimmers, and here's what's gonna happen. You're gonna come up with a solution that works for them to get things right. End of story. If that's a grid, whatever it's called, or something else, that's what's gonna happen, because frankly, as it was pointed out by Councilor Dylan, you are in violation of the special permit that was issued to you. So, this is not a negotiation. You have a couple of weeks to sit down with the, the swimmers. We'll have another one of these meetings, you'll come back to us and tell us what the plan is, and we're gonna hear from them to make sure that the plan is satisfactory. Do I have a motion that the petitioner sit down with the swimmers and come up with something that is satisfactory?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Um, do I have the option to comment anymore?
Uh, no. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Okay, there's another matter on tonight's agenda for special permits, for PPC event services, for a special permit and a modification of the landowner's decision and notice of special permit from August 11th, 2011, and January 26th, 2012, to update the plan date increase in the overnight parking of commercial vehicles from forty-four to seventy-eight for Thirty-Six Cabot Road. And as my fellow city councillors know, this was in front of us at the city council, and the only reason it wasn't moved off the floor is because we ran into a snag about all of the vehicles being registered in the city of Woburn, so we could collect the excise tax, which helps keep our roads intact. And thanks to President Concanon and, um, City Councilor Farello, who both had the, the same information from me in the same night, I spoke to both of them, they reached out to let me know, there is absolutely a way to do this, and that is with leased vehicles, you can use, uh, check the box where it says garage, if you say the city of Woburn, then the, the excise tax, and please, President Concanon and, uh, City Council Farello, jump in if I'm wrong, um, that, that the excise tax automatically goes to the city of Woburn.
It's where the vehicle's principally garage.
Garage, okay. So, I did speak with Attorney Tarby, who has spoken with his client. Could you give the committee an update show as to, Attorney Tarby, as to where we are?
Sure, that, um, that was helpful information after the last, last meeting. In fact, um, the financial person from Peak wasn't even aware of that, and it turns out that, um, twenty-nine of the thirty-seven leased vehicles, um, are garaged in Woburn and excise tax is being paid in Woburn. So, there are, um, remaining eight, eight vehicles, um, they hope to have the, um, changeover by the end of this week so that all will be registered in the city of Woburn. But thirty-seven, I mean, excuse me, when I was here last week, it turned out that twenty-nine of the vehicles were already garaged in Woburn, so.
Who knew? Right? That's.
So, um, I, I hope to have this by the end of the week, and then, in which case, we would, we would file, um, all the updated information with the council.
And you think you'll be able to have all that information by December 20th?
Yes, yeah, the email I received today was that, um, the outstanding, um, eight vehicles are currently being updated with the RMV to show Woburn as the garage location. I expect the remaining eight before end of week, if not sooner.
Okay.
So, we'll be ready for the 20th.
Okay. Do I have any questions from anybody on the Special Permits Committee? City Council Viola?
Uh, one question, the vehicles that they have, are they all labeled with the company's name on it?
Um, that's a good question. I'll, I'll have an answer for you, okay?
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna suggest to the Special Permits Committee that this go back for action. I think we'll be ready on Tuesday, it sounds like.
Make a motion to, ought to pass, at the next.
Back for action. I'd like to see a motion that it go back to the.
Make a motion that it goes back to the city council for review.
Back for action. Back for action.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On the 20th, thank you Attorney Tarby for everything, and a special thank you to Councilor Farello and President Concanon.
I also make a motion to dispense of the reading of the previous general minutes and approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City Council Viola, did you have something?
Joanne beat me to it.
Okay. I think, I think that's it for us tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hopefully, we have our candidates out there.
I call the Committee on Personnel as a committee of the whole to order, um.
Motion to dispense with the previous minutes, uh.
Let's wait for Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's of the whole.
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Gordon, do you wanna see?
Do you wanna talk about this first, the procedure, you just wanna go on?
You just wanted to go and get the-
Oh, I guess we could talk. No, 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 no. Let's, let's just talk about it quickly. So we have four, Gordon, we have four, we believe.
I contacted, I, I've been in contact with three either via email or telephone.
Okay.
Those are the three that have the check mark section in their name, Ms. Wetzel, Mr. Glazer, and Mr. Daley. I know Mr. Scalise is out in the, in the rotunda because I saw him. I don't know Mr. McGrath, and I don't know Mr. Campbell, so if they are out there, and I just didn't, I just didn't confirm.
Okay.
Yeah, I did talk to Mr. McGrath Thursday night, and he said he received it, he intended to be here.
Okay, but he just didn't, I mean-
Yep.
I just didn't hear.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Did anybody happen to talk to Mr. Campbell at all, to know if he was coming? Okay, so we'll just call them in order.
Okay.
Um, I have questions on everybody, for everybody, I already passed them out. I'm assuming we can pick upwards of two to move forward for Tuesday, or we can decide on one tonight. It's, it can be our decision, once we-
I'd say one to three.
Well, it's one to three, but-
Yeah, okay, just the parameters, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, sure.
I wouldn't go any more than three.
Well, no, it's written, you don't go above three. So, yeah, it is, but it's just a matter of whether we want to just, if we feel comfortable with one, we don't need to have two to move forward on Tuesday. My only other question is making sure about the special municipal employee. I, I do believe we have a couple people who are, they work for the city, so we do need to find out about that as well, even though I do believe that the, the money that they get is a stipend, not a salary.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a request that we send a communication to City Solicitor Dusset for an opinion on the matter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And that we get that opinion back before December 20th.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
You have that, Gordon?
I do.
Thank you.
The only other, only other question is if we don't have everybody. Now, we really didn't have, we only had two weeks, right Gordon, between the decision to move forward with this and contacting people. I, I don't know if everybody's out there, but if everyone is not, I feel that we should hold off and allow the other two candidates to be interviewed before voting completely.
Do you want me to just go see if they're out there right now?
Yeah, sure, that might be good. Yeah.
Truncate the decision.
Okay.
Truncate, that was a good word.
That was a really good word.
Two weeks, if you don't show up, you don't-
Journalist.
If you really wanna be on the recommission, you reschedule your stuff.
Well, we can talk about it in a second when Gordon comes back.
Yep, yep.
He's out there counting heads.
Counting six. We got two people to move forward. Two people would be special city employees. Both city employees.
He's so nice. The card he wrote me was so nice.
Correct if there's an issue.
You know what I'm saying, so if the two we pick, everybody is here.
Okay, there's a problem solved. Okay, do you wanna say that for everybody?
If I could, if our two lead candidates tonight, whoever they may be, are city employees, and we put those two forward, on the 20th, we may have no viable candidates in front of us. If it comes back that the city, I just raised the issue, not a deal breakup, but that's something that if the two people are city employees that we like the best, they both go forward on the 20th, and Ellen says they can't do it, or do whatever.
Madam Chair. Who's the second?
Second, city employee?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we had two. I'm sorry.
There's one high school teacher, and then there's one who's a retired teacher. The retired teacher would be able to serve on the board.
Yes, you're correct, retired, yeah.
But the current member-
Okay, I thought there were two, my mistake.
The current, the current employee in the system is the only reason why I raise that question, because we would need further clarification.
I didn't know who they were.
Whether, yeah, Robert Campbell's a high, a high school teacher, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Bill McGrath is a retired high school teacher.
Okay.
Obviously, we've asked for, and we'll wait for the, the opinion, but my understanding is we are the special municipal employee approval granting authority of the council itself. So it's a problem we could also solve.
Right.
But I'll wait to hear from Ellen on the specifics of it.
Right.
Okay, yes.
So, I'm, I know you're the chairman or chairwoman. I'm hopeful that we make a decision on one candidate tonight, seeing, seeing as where we have them all, and we have all the information, we're in committee, we, we can discuss, and what's the procedure? Will we roll call vote each one, chairwoman, or how, how does it work?
Well, usually, it's, if it's in the committee, we just normally talked it out. I mean, this is, we used to just be in the committee room, right? And it was easy. Yeah, no, we would just discuss it, yeah.
I think, Madam Chair, I think there's a difference between a confirmation of a mayoral appointment and the city council's appointment, where we would have to do the appointment by name, no?
No.
I think, I think we could do it either way, like if someone to nominate, you know, Mary Jones, seconded and all approved, that could work. But to your point, we tend to say the name of the candidate we choose.
Because I, because this is our appointment, we're not confirming the mayor's appointment.
Yeah, we tend to just say out loud the name of the candidate.
Yeah, that's true, but this can be informal. I mean, I, I believe that this is something, this is how we've done it in the past, in the committee, in the personnel committee meetings. We talked through, we looked at the candidates, we saw them, and we would decide on who really seemed to be the best, and we talked about it.
Oh, I understand that, but there's six candidates, there's eight of us, and for, for the purposes of maybe keeping things moving, I was thinking we would potentially take votes or say somebody's name and then go around the room or something to that effect, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, normally, we didn't do it in the whole so that we would actually be just in the committee, and there'd only be three of us talking to each other, deciding, and then we would bring a couple people forward. So this way, we have the whole committee. I'm, I'm fine with that, but, I'm good, yeah, okay. All right, let's bring the first one. Jessica Wetzel.
Did anybody have a business thing? Wait, I'll hold this. Who's first on the list?
So we interview everybody, and then we vote afterwards.
Correct, yeah. Keep notes.
Well, that's the fair thing to do.
Keep notes, yeah. Hi, Jessica, welcome.
Hi, how is everybody?
Good, how are you? I'm Joanne Campbell, I'll be the chairman for this process. We all have the same questions.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask you the questions, and then I'm going to open it up to the other councilors. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
Perfect question. So I guess I'll start back, I'll go all the way back to college, which was a little while ago, but let's start there, 'cause I feel it's relevant to the position. My initial background was in hospitality business. I did management of people, management of sales operations, budgetary, hiring, things like that, both in restaurants as well as in hotels, and on the sales side of that as well. I did that for multiple years, probably about five or six, transitioned more into restaurant management, again, managing people, managing communication, which I think is extremely important in this position, really in any, but that's kind of one of my strong areas, communication. And I did that for a bit, and then I actually transitioned out of business into education. I went to UMS Boston and graduated about a year and a half, oh, two years actually, in December, with a master's of education specifically in teaching the visually impaired, so I have a strong focus on accessibility, which I'd love to bring to this council. I think, I know Woburn's looking to do a lot of that, I've seen lots of emails going around about ways to make specifically playgrounds accessible, and I have a lot of really neat ideas. I also have a daughter who's visually impaired, so it's also something near and dear to my heart to make our town more accessible to the community. So I worked for Perkins School for the blind as a teacher of the visually impaired. I focused actually on infant toddlers, so that's anyone from birth to three, and I worked with families as well as the students to really help the families understand their child's visual impairment, understand kind of what they're going through, and kind of almost be a social worker as well as a teacher. And I did that until recently, I took a little bit of a leave of absence as I just had my third child, so I'm taking an extended maternity leave, and I'm focusing more on giving back to the community area right now. I'm still volunteering with Perkins, I volunteered on their walk committee, they do an annual walk every year to raise funds for the school. I also am a member of the Braille Council, it's through the Department of Education, so that council meets every quarterly, and we work to make the academic curriculum more accessible to students with visual impairments, specifically students that read Braille, which isn't every student that has a visual impairment, it's actually a small percentage of. But I do that, as well as I am a member of the Early Childhood Program Parent Group through, both the Shamrick and the Reeves Schools have the preschool, which is called the Early Childhood Program, and we organize parent groups, meetups for students once a month. We actually have one tomorrow, we'll be making ornaments, and we try to do a give back to the community as well, so we'll be collecting donations for the school, they're in need of Clorox wipes, tissues, things like that. So I feel all of that combined with also, I'm involved with Girl Scouts and a few other things, really, I think, make me a strong candidate for the position. I'm heavily involved in the community, I have a strong focus on accessibility, and I have a drive for communication.
Excellent. What do you see as your role as a commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as your director?
I've met Rory actually a couple times through, we're not friends per se, but I do know her through some of the programs that my daughters have participated in, and I think she's a wonderful person, and I enjoy talking with her. I think she's really energetic, as am I, so I feel we would work really well together in that regard. I think my biggest role with her would be communication, honestly, figuring out what needs to be done, figuring out what she needs, and kind of how to make all that happen, almost as a liaison role between the community, between you, between her, and just getting that ball rolling and moving things forward.
What is your vision for Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add, and what are some of your favorite programs?
Sure. Some of my favorite programs, I'll start with that if I could, are ones I've personally participated in. The Bouncing Beans Program that Allison runs is phenomenal, so she runs a program for, it's zero to 12 months, and then a separate one, I think it's one to three years old. And so it's parent and, or caregiver and child go into the program, and you get to do about 45 minutes of structured play with a focus on sensory development. It's a lot of fun, and it's a really great way, I think, for caregivers to meet, because sometimes you're in this like secluded area, as a caregiver, you're stuck at home maybe with a sick kid for a week, or you just have so many things to do. It's a great way to go into the community and meet some people that are going through the same thing as you, and to have a conversation about it. And that's very important to me as a person, as a mom and as a member of the community, to have a place where people can go, hang out, have conversations, learn things from other people, learn what other people are doing, whether that be with their children or as an adult to an adult. For instance, the yoga program, that's something else I've done. I'm not even honestly a yoga person, I enjoy spinning and running. Yoga to me is difficult because you have to kind of calm down and relax, which is something I find difficult to do, if you haven't noticed, but I also think that's enjoyable as well. So I think, that all being said, having programs that the community wants, so listening to what they want, getting their feedback, taking that into consideration as well as into consideration the resources that we're working with, and the individuals that we have to run those programs, and how can we make that something that we can give back to the residents that they really want, and making it enjoyable and making it fun. It shouldn't be a task or a chore, it should be something that everybody wants to come to and they're excited about. It shouldn't be a to-do list you need to check off, "Oh, shoot, this is in my calendar, do I really wanna go? Oh, it's in my calendar, I'm so excited, 'cause the Parks and Rec is putting it on, I definitely wanna go." So I wanna bring that kind of energy and excitement and, to the programs, that people just, they wanna be there, and they find something that they can connect with personally.
Do you foresee any conflicts with your, well, actually, you're on leave, I was gonna say on your present employment with this position?
Not present employment, no conflicts. I mean, there's always the, something happens, you get sick, somebody gets sick and you have to take care of them. However, I am a very dedicated individual, I also have a spouse that, he's wonderful, if something were to happen, I know he would obviously step in, I wouldn't, see any reason why I wouldn't be able to be here monthly or however often it's needed, I know the, at least monthly if not more, and I am happy to do whatever's needed. So not with employment, obviously, there's personal things that happen, that's something that we can't avoid, but I am an extremely dedicated individual, so.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the other councilors.
Thanks, Joanne.
Yep, does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Not a question, just, you have great energy.
Thank you.
Wherever this goes, if you don't get picked, stay at it, because people like you make our community better. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Jeffrey, I appreciate that.
Councilor Mercer Bruin?
Thank you. I just wanna say, I really think you bring a fresh perspective to this. Not only are you a professional and an excellent communicator, but clearly, you're boots on the ground, right? So you, you're using these programs, you're talking to other people who have the ability to use these programs, which certainly Rory does a great job, they get those things filled up, but it doesn't hurt to get the word out there to the, you know, it, it always helps to have more boots on the ground, right?
Agreed.
And your energy is amazing, so I just wanted to, to say thank you for coming down here tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilor Viola?
Thank you. First I want to thank you for applying for the position, you've got great energy. One question I do have is, have you, have you attended any of the open space meetings over the past few months?
That's a wonderful question, and unfortunately, no, I haven't. Has it been on my list of things to do? It certainly has, I have not attended any of those, so, no, I have not, an answer to your question.
And to follow up, if it was on your agenda, what open spaces in the city would you like to see something accomplished at?
I think the skate park is interesting that you have proposed, I think that's a really great idea. I know there's, I, honestly, just on my street alone, I see kids whipping up and down, I think to have a safe space for them to do that, that's not a street, would be wonderful. And I just got my middle daughter a skateboard, she doesn't know it for Christmas, so, she's three, but we could certainly go there too, but I really, I think there's a huge need in the community for that.
Can leave that out of the minutes.
Yeah. Just in case she reads it, you never know. I, I really do, it's a safe space to go and for kids to hang out, and just another option for them to get energy out, which I think is very important, and to use those muscles.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Anyone else question? Okay, Jessica, thank you very much. So nice meeting you.
Thank you so much, I very much appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening and stay warm.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, Stephen Scalise is next.
I found the section of the conflict that we just saw, that we need to ask Ellen about, so it's-
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Very efficient, Joe.
What's that?
Very efficient.
Well, I figured, you know, cut him some time.
Hello, welcome.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Very good.
I'm Joanne Campbell, and I will be asking the questions, I'm the chairman of personnel. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
Well, some of you may know me. I'm Stephen Scalise. I worked for the City Woburn for 18 years. I worked in the Park Department. I helped take care of all the fields around town. I helped build a lot of these fields that you see, the irrigation, everything that you, all these kids play on. I've had a hand in for the past 18 years. I left about four years ago for a new opportunity, but I wanted to stay involved. I have two young daughters, 13 and 10. They both enjoy all the recreation programs. They've been involved in track, volleyball, different aspects of just all the recreation, the public skating. And I just think that I would be a great candidate just for all the years of experience I've had and how the fields are used and maintained and the appropriate way to go about taking care of these fields. I've also been a hockey coach in my life. I work at the rink. I drive a Zamboni also. So I've been involved in a lot of aspects in different parts of this city and I loved every moment of it. And I still want to carry that out as part of Recreation Committee and have a say in what goes on around here. And I think I'd really enjoy that.
What do you see as your role as a commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as your director?
She does a wonderful job with all of the programs. I wouldn't change much about them. I would just help everything that goes along with them, maybe expand to certain things. You know, with my, I know that my daughter does volleyball and, you know, I'd like to see different things done with, expanded with that. And the public skating, I think, is really great. They do a lot with it. So I, to be honest with you, I wouldn't change really much about it. I would just want to be involved and help expand it, make it, make it a better program.
What is your vision for the Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add? And what are some of your favorite programs?
Well, like I said, my, one of my favorite programs is the volleyball programs. My daughter's involved in it. She loves it. The track, she really liked. I would like to see that expanded more into the spring. And what was the other part of that question? Sorry.
Do you have a vision? Is there a vision for the Recreation Commission? Any programs that you'd like to add?
I would like to see maybe some more school, school-oriented programs added. I know that's recreation, it's a time to get out there, but as far as being inside a gym and different, to include more kids other than sports, something like that. But other than that, no.
Okay. Do you foresee any conflicts with your present employment in this position?
I do not, no.
I'm now going to open it up for the rest of the city council for any questions. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Councilor DeMamore.
What do you currently do now?
I am a local 12 union plumber.
Oh, okay. And have you been to any of the, using my colleague's question, have you been to any of the open space meetings or any of the meetings that have gone on in the Rec Department that's had, in the public meetings in the last?
Not as of late, no.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I'm here. I want to be involved more, want to be part of the Recreation Committee. Like I said, it was probably about three and a half years ago I left the Parks Department for this opportunity. And now that I'm kind of settled into it, you know, I want to be more involved with the City Woburn and be in part of the recreation again.
Excellent.
Thank you. Yep.
Yes, Counselor Viola?
Speaking about open space, so you should have a vast knowledge of it. We have worked for the Parks Department.
Correct. Yep.
What underutilized spaces would you like to see used and what would you like to be seen, what would you like to be seen done at those places?
Well, it's hard to say because a lot of these fields are used every single day for different programs. It was something that would have to be discussed as far as being able to add different programs to them. But I mean, as far as the open space that I think could be utilized the most is over, behind Green Street Pool. That is a space that could be utilized as part of recreation for all different activities for spring and the summer. As far as indoor spaces go, I'm not sure what is happening with the Hurd School, but I know there's, that could be something that could be put into there. But as fields-wise, I think that's your best option as the whole different things for recreation there.
Yes, Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Hi, Mr. Scalise.
How are you?
Thank you for coming.
No, thank you.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So aside from the open space meetings, when you were working for the city or no longer working for the city, give us an example of where you have participated. Have you come to any planning board meetings or city council meetings or gone down to the senior center or?
Yeah, I was part of the city council. I did some of these city council meetings with different things, aspects and stuff like that. I was part of the festival and the common committee with the Kiwanis.
Great.
As far as senior center goes, we did a lot of, we did some things over there. I was part of the planning with the middle common.
I don't mean as your work with the city. I mean, just as a resident.
Yeah, just as a resident.
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, the festival and the common. I have done some stuff with my children at the senior center.
Great.
That's, that's, that's off the top of my head, that's what I got.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, any others? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next is William McGrath.
Good evening.
I'm Joanne Campbell and I am the chairman of personnel. I am going to be asking every candidate the same questions and then I'm going to open it up to the city council for any other questions.
Sure.
Okay. Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
Well, I have a lot of experience in Woburn youth sports. I was past president of Woburn Little League. I was on Little League Board of Directors for years. I was a volunteer football official for Pee Wee Football for years. I coached a little basketball at the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club when my son was young. I worked for the Recreation Department as a young teacher, as a part-time job in the youth basketball programs. I also worked for recreation in the summer camp with the special needs children. I did that for a number of years. And that was a very rewarding experience, working with children and young adults and older adults with various disabilities. I think I'm a, I think I have a lot to offer. I think I can offer my experiences and, as a member of the Recreation Board.
What do you see as your role as a commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as director?
Oh, I think I would be very supportive of the director of recreation. I think be supportive of any new ideas that she would bring forward. I also am mostly retired. I work a little bit part-time now, but I would have time to visit and be at different activities for the recreation. I can remember when I was president of Little League, we always invited the recreation commissioners to opening day and to banquets and they always came. I would be very supportive of all the activities of the Recreation Department.
What is your vision for the Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add? And what are some of your favorite programs?
I would be always open to adding programs. I would like to see the Recreation Department get involved in activities for young adults, children, maybe even young adults, in activities that they could play or use later on in life, like swimming and tennis, golf if it was possible. I just think that activities like that, I would be interested in seeing if there was possibility to have a night at the casino for adults if they wanted to go. Would not, everything wouldn't have to be all sports and activities, but things like that I'd be very open about. And any program that could deal with children with physical and mental disabilities, I would be very supportive of.
Do you foresee any conflicts with your present employment in this position?
No, I only work right now two days a week. I'm a retired teacher, as you probably know. I stay actively involved in the Lions Club, but I don't see any conflicts that would arise that would not make me able to serve, do my best for the Recreation Commission.
I'm now going to open it up to the rest of the councilors to see if they have any questions. Anyone? From Mr. McGrath? No, looks like we are all set.
Thank you for your time.
Counselor Viola?
I'll ask you the same question that I've asked the two previous people that have been in. Have you attended any of the open space committee meetings over the past few months?
I have not.
All right. And are you familiar with any of the open space areas in the city?
If you ask me to name them, I can't.
Nope, not to name them, but do you have any insight as to what should take place at any of these open space areas?
I really, it would be off the top of my head. I just can't name anything that I would be, I would always be in favor of having more fields available for the children. I would always be in favor of having any activities in the open space that would be worthwhile. Another thing I thought I'd mention, I mentioned the fund races that the Recreation does every year. I think it's a very worthwhile program. I meant to say that earlier.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Christopher Glazer next.
I am Joanne Campbell and I'm the chairman of personnel. I am going to be asking the same questions to each of the candidates and then I'm going to open it up to the city council for any other questions.
Surely.
Okay? Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
Well, I've grown up in Woburn most of my life and participated in most of the recreational and developmental sports they've had. In reading the website, I didn't realize what a robust program the Recreation Department really has, honestly. I did see there was, there's a lot of construction supposedly going to be starting and some things. And my background experience was construction my whole life. I worked for Earl and Construction for 40 years up in Burlington. I ran their estimating department and I started there too as a carpenter, but I ran their estimating department for the last 10 years. And, you know, dealing with engineers, architects, landscape architects, builders, and seemed like there was some of that going on, although I don't know exactly the function if that, if those type of things go through purchasing here in the city hall or not. But I'm pretty familiar with construction and I think my background like that, I'm retired now. I just retired at the end of 2020. And I'd like to see if I can make a contribution because I feel that I've been comfortable here, the city's been good to me and I'd like to see if I maybe can give some payback.
What do you see as your role as a commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as director?
It looks like a support position, but if there's, if there's anything that needs to be done outside of the meetings, all the meeting notes that I read, it looks very similar to what I used to do three times a week in construction. Go and sit a meeting, go through your items of note, table some items for further discussion, put some items out for bid and bring up any new, bring up any new items that needed to be addressed. And certainly do anything that the, that the board needed done. And personally, I wouldn't even mind getting out there myself and looking at things if the board needed that type of oversight. But I wasn't quite sure, I didn't see, was there a position published with the, like scope of work that you'd be doing?
Yes.
Was there? I probably didn't read it. Having been retired, I probably, sometimes I'm not as astute with that as I probably should be.
What is your vision for the Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add? And what are some of your favorite programs?
I love the swimming at the pools, the way that they take care of the pools during the summer. I learned to swim down a Foley Beach with ski do long and that's when you could still swim in the pond. I'm still swimming today. So there's, there's things that you can pick up that the Recreation Department has here for, for everybody that, you know, it's not just like putting the pads on Thanksgiving Day when you're in high school. You know, you, it's probably the last time you put the pads on Thanksgiving game, but some of the things that they have, like the basketball programs, Intermule Basketball, played all of that. I still run around the pond about four times a week and go down to the little fun runs they have. I'd like to, I'd like to see if I can enhance any and all of those programs and be, be something positive on the board to, to help the city come along because I may, I just see so many more, seems like you have an inverse relationship here between the amount of apartments we have going up and the amount of open space. They're not, they're not the same. In the open space, the recreational part of it is, I think, instrumental to having good health and also having a, keep, keeping the children of the city too out of trouble. If you keep them busy, keep them playing sports, sports is a great outlet. Teaches them about teamwork. There's a lot more depth than just putting the ball through the hoop.
Do you foresee any conflicts with your present employment in this position?
Unless there's anything that happens between 4:30 in the morning and 7:00, that's, that's when I work now. Because I work, I'm a part-time lifeguard over the Y.
Okay.
That's all I do. Sorry, I am retired, but I just, I just started that job last year.
Okay.
So it looks like the meetings are probably in the evening.
Yeah.
Might have to kick me and wake me up.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the rest of the council. Do we have any questions? Yes, Counselor Viola?
Have you attended any of the open space meetings over the past few months?
I have not, although I've read in the paper a lot about what's been going on at the Hurd School site.
Do you have any specific ideas that you'd like to see at any of the open space sites in the city?
The, the Klap School Playground that was built down there, I see so many children down there with their families having a great time. And the only piece of space I wonder about sometimes is up the Taki School. I've never seen anything done with that. Looks like I'm not the only one wondering, huh? But, you know, I look and say, you know, is there another playground around there? There is obviously one at the, at the other school over there, but might not be a bad place with something like they put in at the Klap, unless there's other plans for it. But I think that the park they built at the Klap School is tremendous piece of work and it's really been, looks like it's been received real well from the neighborhood. And I think more, more things like that, when we have, when the space is available, would be a great idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
Your running history is remarkable. You're the bottom of the personal interest you put, the number of marathons and triathlons you ran, that's.
I enjoy doing them and fortunately, I still have my knees with me like most of my friends have been.
The original set? You got the original set of knees?
The original set, right here. Although they, they do give me some trouble from time to time now. So I do a little more swimming and a little less running, but I still enjoy the running. So we've got a great resource down there at the pond. It's terrific, terrific down there.
Okay. Oh, yes, Counselor Dillon.
If by chance you don't get appointed here, keep us in mind for future seats that may be available on different boards. Folks like yourself are what Woburn's all about and we appreciate your time and your level of commitment that you're willing to do.
I'd certainly do that and I'd love to, I'd love to try depending upon, you know, what the board might be and if I feel I'm qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
All right, you folks. I don't know.
Taking a quick minute break.
I don't remember.
Which interviews?
When I?
I don't think they were.
I don't think they were either.
We use in-person or Zoom?
We were in-person.
I sent, I requested when the group last week.
Oh, yeah. Know your neighbor.
They wanted to be on TV, so.
Yep. That's very nice of them to do this.
I'm sure the community would like to be well informed.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, Joseph Daley will be next.
Just right up to the restroom right here, one of these two microphones.
Right up front there, Joe. Perfect.
Welcome, Mr. Daley.
Evening, how we doing everyone?
Very well, thank you. How are you?
Great, thank you.
I'm, I am Joanne Campbell, I'm the Chairman of Personnel. I'm going to ask you the same questions that I'm asking all the candidates and then I'm going to open it up to the rest of the City Council. Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
I've been involved for a lot of years in Woburn sporting, for youth sports for a lot of years, coaching, management, some of the boards and all, and use a lot of the facilities around here for many years and thought to myself with, you know, my 40 years in construction and management background and, and sports, I maybe I'll be an asset to the committee and, you know, and hope, try to throw my hat in the ring and see what happens.
What do you see as your role as a Commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as Director?
I think to be as a support function for Rory, she obviously has the, the difficult job of the, you know, day-to-day operations of the Commission, I guess, I can see this as, it would be more of a support function, but something to help, maybe a sounding board or things she may need to bounce ideas off of some different parties and, and, you know, along those lines, I think more of a support to her, help her function as efficiently as possible.
What is your vision for the Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add? What are some of your favorite programs?
I think there's always room for improvement in anything, but I think there's a great basis here. I've been involved with a lot of the programs for the youth, whether that be the Challenger Baseball or, you know, through the, through the Challenger Skating Program, things like that for the, more of the, you know, the, the challenged kids in the city. I think it's always great to try to get them more involved in the city as much as we can through coaching, mentorship, through the high school programs. I think that'd be a great way to go. I think try to, I know I've been, my wife used to work over at the Senior Center, some way to get the recreational facilities where they, you know, where they're doing pickleball, things like that, to try to get more of the seniors involved in more, because we have such great facilities in the city, I think we try to get more people involved rather than just to, you know, focus on youth sports, things like that. I think that might be an avenue to look at.
Do you foresee any conflicts with your present employment in this position?
No, absolutely not. I work for myself and, you know, except for having to answer to myself, I guess that's the only one. And my wife, of course, but that's okay.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the Council. Yes, Councilor DeMambro.
Good evening, Mr. Daley.
Evening.
You seem like you have a lot of energy, you've got an extensive line of experience in construction and I think you've coached almost every sport. Coach basketball? I don't see basketball, you got any of that?
Yeah, just one thing, you wouldn't want to see me coach basketball.
All right, all right. You can't have everything. My question is, what do you see for projects currently being discussed that you see as important, that you would like to see or you would like to get involved with and you kind of want to get behind, you know what I mean? Do you see anything that, that we're currently been talking about in the meetings and the open space meetings and that we've been having? I don't know if you've been to any of them or heard any of them or watched any of them, but are there any projects that you, you just want to get behind and, you know, get involved with?
I think, a specific project, I think I'd always look to try to improve what we have, what we, what infrastructure you do have, how can we make it better, make it more inclusive for everyone to use, make it a little bit more user-friendly, rather than sometimes they get, we get wrapped up in, in a coach for many years, I see that wrapped up in the organized part of sports. And that kind of gets lost in shovel where recreation, more open time, make it a little more friendly, make it more, you know, just open space, open time, where it's not just always structured events, might be a better use of some of the facilities that, you know, make people feel a little bit more, not intimidated to go down, it's not part of a team or part of an organization, you know, it's, it's everyone's facility, it's everyone's recreation. Let's try to get everyone involved and feel more comfortable using the facilities.
Excellent, thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, Councilor Dillon.
How are you, Mr. Daley?
Very, good way yourself, Councilor?
Good. I see you have your Massachusetts Construction Supervisor's License.
Yes, sir.
And your OSHA show, we both share those together. So I'll ask this question.
Yes.
How do you see those two, the license and the certification for OSHA helping you in this particular position that you'd be applying for?
Well, I think as yourself, you know, involved in construction or maintenance, any type of things like that, where I think you have an eye for it, where you know you have to do things per code, you know, with safety always in mind because of what your background entails and have no certification, I think that could be helpful to, when we're looking at, you know, trying to maybe do different type of use in facility, okay, we have to make sure this is compliance and then you can bring a little bit to the table as far as that goes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Mercer Bruin.
Hi, Mr. Daley, how are you?
Very well, yourself?
I'm good, thank you. So, you know, we have several parks, we have acres and acres and acres of open space in the city that, that's not parks, but trails and all that. Name two parks in the city that you think could use a little assistance in terms of equipment, in terms of layout, in terms of what you see, just name two.
Okay, I think Gonzales, I think we could, it's, use it, I don't know, as you say, major improvements, but I think as far as you could use it in a more, I don't think it's used to its fullest capacity for what we have over there. I'm trying to, Frulo's guys did a great job up there. Now you stumped me on that one. But I think in the senior center, you've expanded that a lot, that open space up there, where you add the pickleball to that and the softball. I mean, in the old days, by being a little league 25 years ago, we used to go up and hide behind the senior center because there was just some grass up there and turn to a nice softball field. So I think things along those lines, maybe try to find, you know, find a better use of the space, try to open up more of the space and, you know, just make, again, my big thing is trying to make it feel a little more inclusive for everyone to use rather than just a structured facility, but open up more, but also make it more a friendly environment.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Councilor Viola.
Thank you. My question is, previously to putting in for this position, have you attended any open space meetings or any Recreation Commission meetings?
I have not, no.
Any other questions? Okay, we are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for all you guys doing, I know it's an easy job.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We have Robert Campbell next. Good evening, welcome.
How's everyone?
Very well, thank you. How are you?
Good.
I'm Joanne Campbell, I'm the Chairman of Personnel. I'm going to be asking you a series of questions, the same questions that I've asked all the candidates, and then I'm going to open it up to the rest of the City Council.
Awesome.
Please tell us about your experience and why it makes you a good candidate to fill the Recreation Commission vacancy.
Yeah, so I like to be involved as many aspects around the city as I can. I've been heavily involved with the Recreation Department itself ever since I graduated high school. I was a park instructor for the summers while I was working, while I was going to college. I've continued to be involved volunteering my time coaching for basketball. I have run a challenger basketball program throughout the winters as well through the Recreation Department. And then I'm also very involved with the, the school community as well. I'm a teacher up at Woburn High School. I coach sports in the fall and in the spring, so I'm always involved, I'm always around the different parks, fields around the city. So I'm always, I like to make sure that everything is taken care of and that we can always improve wherever we need to.
What do you see as your role as a Commissioner with Rory Lindstrom as Director?
I would like to work closely with Rory of introducing any sort of new programs that we can to be as inclusive to all the kids, all the community members that we have here in Woburn. I would like to make sure that all our facilities are up to standard and make sure that we can give the citizens of Woburn the best experience we can wherever they, they might go around the city.
What is your vision for the Recreation Commission? Are there any programs that you would like to add? And what are some of your favorite programs?
So I'll start with that last question personally, just because I'm so involved with it. The Challenger Basketball Program that I've been involved with, I love working with those types of kids. They might not get as many opportunities as, say, the regular kids might get, they don't have as many programs that they can be involved with. So I always like to get them involved as many programs as I can, so I would definitely like to expand that where we can. I know they also have challenger baseball programs, challenger hockey programs, but that's really an area that I like to pride myself on being involved with and I would love to extend those types of programs as much as we could.
Do you foresee any conflicts with your present employment in this position?
I don't believe so. I think if anything, it's that we're all on the same side here. Being involved with the schools, being a member on the Rec Commission, we all want the best for our kids in the city here. We want to improve everything where we can, so in my opinion, I feel like both jobs would be on the same side.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions from the City Council. Yes, Councilor Viola.
I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked previous candidates. Have you attended any of the open space committee meetings over the past few months?
I have not.
All right, and then what specific open space areas throughout the city would you like to see something done at?
Open spaces and not currently that there's a park there or a field or anything?
Correct.
So that is a good question. I have not currently thought about any of the open spaces. If that is an area of importance, then I would definitely start to shift my focus on those parts. Mainly, I've been focusing on the parks and everything that are already in place, but I would love to look into more of all the open spaces and the possibilities that we have of what we could do with those spaces.
And also, I like to hear that you've been heavily involved with the Recreation Commission previously and that you'd like to expand and allow for more inclusivity, which is great.
Awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercer Bruin.
Thank you. Just a follow-up from Councilor Viola's question. So name two parks in the city where you think there could be some improvements and what are they? Is it equipment, is it layout?
So the first one that I would bring up is Frulo Field up in North Woburn with the baseball field there, and I know we have the playground that's right next to it, the pool, we have the dog park that's in the outfield. I believe more netting for protection for the people in those parks would be great. We already, sorry, we already do have a netting that is adjacent to the playground there, but I think that needs to be replaced. There are some holes in there and it's not exactly standing up great. I know, I believe that there have been plans to put up a bigger netting closer to the baseball field to also protect the swimming pool. But I also think it would be great to add a netting out next to the dog park because I've been around the field a lot and I have seen plenty of balls be hit in there and so I would love to protect the residents that want to attend the dog park and don't have to worry about getting hit with the baseball out there. Another park that I would like to see some improvements at the Joyce Soccer Fields, I know that there are always during the fall and spring.
It's one that's not a school.
Oh, not a school.
Not a school.
Okay. Um, let me think, where else?
There are several.
I believe at Leland Park, there could be some improvement. I think the roller hockey rink there, I think that is a popular one that a lot of kids would like to use, that I think we could make some sort of improvements to that, maybe do over the boards there, and also even the basketball court there as well. I think new nets could be put up to better improve our residents' experience at that park.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, President Concanon.
I just had a question about, Bob, you currently are working for the Recreation Department in the summertime, right?
Uh, no, I am not currently working there in the summer. I, I teach summer school during the summers.
Okay, when is the Challenger Basketball Program?
Um, it's during the winter and actually, this is my first year that I've had to step down and hand that program off to someone else.
Okay, when you were doing it, did you collect a stipend from them?
Um, no, I, I worked for Rory as a volunteer.
As a volunteer, so you have not collected a stipend while you've been a teacher from any other city?
Um, so Rory also had me work as, doing the clocks for some of the recreation basketball games, which I would be paid hourly for those, but that was the only other payment.
The reason I ask is we have an inquiry about whether a City of Woburn employee can be appointed to the Recreation Commission and, and collect a stipend. And I was just wondering if you had already been through that process.
Okay, yeah, no, no stipends. If anything, that I was paid by Rory would, would have been an hourly pay. I have not been appointed for any stipend position outside of the school.
That's a question that we're asking then and hopefully get an answer soon. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Also, I would just like to say, if there is any conflict between my involvement with the Recreation Department and then being on the Rec Commission, I would be ready to step down from any position with the Rec Department so that I could be a member on the Recreation Commission.
Councilor DeMambro.
So I have a question. And, and it kind of stems on my, my colleague. Do you have any ideas for low impact for the adults? Do you have any ideas for programs for adults? I know we talk a lot about the kids. Do you have any ideas or any visions of the spaces that we already have existing for the adults in the community and, and the moms and dads out there that want to just do something a little bit more low impact other than, you know, what the kids are doing?
Do you mind just explaining what you mean by low impact?
Like walking or, or any type of hiking trails, dog walking parks, just low impact, bird watching type area type stuff, you know, low impact.
Easy on the knees.
Easy on the knees. Easy on the knees.
Took you long enough to get it.
I'm trying to use my word, guide my words.
Um, yeah, I mean, I believe any sort of area of a trail that we can allow residents to walk in would be great. I don't know, again, what the plausibility would be of any of the idea, but I know Library Field is a nice open area, I know it has a softball field, but I know that is a nice area to walk around. I know in past years, they've done the Relay for Life where they kind of set up a little track, I don't know if there's any sort of possibility there. Even in the woods areas around Frulo, Weifer Park, I know there's a lot of area out there. I don't know if we would be able to kind of create some sort of trail that would maybe connect. I know now at the back of the woods is where the new fire station is going and if there's any sort of trail we could make to connect the parks at Weifer to kind of get out to Main Street there, kind of like an idea of how at the ponds, where they have that path that connects out to Lexington Street, maybe an idea like that where it's a new route that people can take if they like to go on walks.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Councilor Frulo.
Your commitment to the Challenger Program is commendable. My sons both participated in Challenger Baseball and it was a very rewarding experience, so I just commend you for that and your knowledge of the different programs shows your enthusiasm and being involved, so I commend you for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
All right, well, we have six really good candidates. So I would like to just take a moment just to discuss if there's anybody in particular that stood out for anyone. Yes, Councilor Mercer Bruin?
I'll jump right in. I think the first candidate, she, she blew me away for a few reasons. One, she's a mom. Two, clearly she has a lot of energy.
Yes.
And is somebody who's a good communicator. Three, her experience in the handicap community, huge for me. And four, I meant what I said about boots on the ground. Of all the candidates that we saw here tonight, she seemed the most connected to what's happening in our community. And I think that's important for the Recreation Commission, as much as it's important to have been a coach or to have been involved with helping with the fields, having that connection to the community is going to be extremely helpful to Rory. And for all the years that I've been on the City Council, I don't recall us ever having someone who had that kind of energy and that kind of connection for the Recreation Commission. So for me, that was a hand, hands down, hands down.
No, I mean, I agree, I agree, very talented, great ideas. I, I didn't know her the first time I met her.
I've never met her.
Her energy was tremendous.
And Mr. Campbell, I thought, was, was very good as well, but if you asked me, if you said you have to pick one of those two, I would have picked the first candidate.
Okay.
If you look at her resume, along the side, the stuff that's on is tremendous.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, okay, Councilor Viola.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. First, I'd like to say I agree with Dallin that the first female that spoke, she was very, her, I don't know, she was very well put together, she did a good job presenting and thought she'd be a good candidate. But I also think that Mr. Campbell as well, being in the schools, worked for the Rec Department, done the Challenger Baseball, Basketball uh, done the Challenger baseball, basketball. He has boots on the ground as well with the Rec Department and I think it would be an asset to the city.
Yes, Councilor Dillon?
I don't disagree. Um, Jessica was outstanding. Um, they were all really good. Um, I'm thinking Mr. Daley may bring a, a little different point of view and maybe more of an oversight on, um, what is needed out there as far as looking at it in a construction point of view. I, I don't think we can overlook that with his experience there as well as his OSHA and the safety and, um, his coaching record speaks for itself. Uh, so right now, if you ask me, I'm, I'm leaning two. To pare it down from two, it would be Mr. Daley and Jessica Whites is the correct way.
Wetzel.
Wetzel.
So in my mind, at least I'm down to two.
Okay, that's good. Uh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor DeMers. Yeah, I think you had your hand up for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I, for the sake of not repeating what the previous members have said, I think, uh, Ms. Wetzel is a great candidate. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting position I'm in because the, the seat that was on the commission that became vacant was held by my father. So, um, I, I spoke with him a lot about what the Recreation Commission was doing and, and the, the different types of issues that they've discussed. And I think, over the years, one of the greatest things I heard, and having been on the school committee and having appointed somebody as well to, um, the Recreation Commission is that, you know, a lot of times we get some great qualified candidates, but we need to balance out the board with people with different experiences. And I think having folks that have experience with those of us with developmental disabilities or, um, ideas of how to address different things, uh, within the recreation programming, I think, you know, one of the common issues that I've gotten in my district or my ward is that, you know, making our playgrounds more accessible for those with disabilities. Um, so I think kind of going through that lens, um, I think, I think Ms. Wetzel's a great candidate. Uh, we had some excellent candidates tonight and I could see them being very, uh, positive influences in Woburn and even other positions if they came available. Um, and I also think that, you know, um, Mr. Campbell was very, you know, vibrant, exciting. Um, he talked about, um, he had actually specifics. I think that was, that was key with regards to Leland Park and some of the, the equipment there and then Ferrulo, uh, actual, uh, instances. Um, so I think I'd be, I'd be leaning towards, um, um, those two if put to, you know, having two people. Um, and then if we were going with three, I think Mr. Daley's a good candidate in his management experience, wide swath of experience throughout a lot of sports, um, and his activity and involvement volunteering at other events. I've seen him around, around town a lot. He was at the, uh, senior, uh, lunch, uh, drive-thru, uh, for the holiday, uh, for Thanksgiving. So, um, you know, these are great candidates and I, I have nothing negative to say about any of them, but I think if we were to whittle it down to three, I would go with, uh, Jessica Wetzel, uh, Joe Daley and Robert Campbell.
Councilor DeMambro?
Where I sit is I think Jessie Wetzel was absolutely extraordinary with her energy and everything and her background and what she's accomplished and her dedication. Uh, strong candidate, strong communication skills, extremely sociable. Um, Mr. Campbell, I, I appreciated him knowing, you know, almost, you know, on the ground, boots on the ground, like we have said, you know, different areas of Woburn, parks and what can be done and what should be done. And he had some insight, which I, I appreciated. My third would be Mr. Daley. And the reason why, I like his energy, but I also appreciate the fact that he has such an extensive background in construction. Um, we have a lot of projects, you know, that are going on. Um, we just did the seven-year plan or we're going through the seven-year plan in recreation, uh, the Recreation, uh, Department. Uh, you know, I think, I think you need someone like that on the board, you know, with some, you know, construction background so that when these projects do come up or ideas come up and go into the project phase, you have someone with some experience. And those are my three candidates that I'm struggling with. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Dillon?
I'm listening to everyone. Now Mr. Campbell's back in with me too, so I'm up at three. I'm going up instead of down here.
Yes, Councilor...
Unless there's other people first. I don't want to...
I know. Anybody else? Oh, no. Okay, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to make a comment about the construction background. So when we get to, you know, the building of the, the new park, when we get to Harold Wyman and some of the others, there will be committees put together where there could be phenomenal opportunities for some of the candidates tonight with that background, where they could probably have more input on something like that with their background versus the Recreation Commission. It's not, again, I, I was liaison at the Recreation Commission for a few years. There's not, there's not a lot of that that, that happens, right? So I just wanted to make sure people understood that. There could be opportunity for these other candidates to serve on those committees. Um, and then I was going to ask you, um, Chairwoman Campbell, I, I really hope we, we don't send this to the City Council with, with three names. I hope we do the work here because on Tuesday, the cameras are going to be rolling and all three of those people are going to have to stand up here and we're going to have to debate it. And I don't, a, a, and they all know that that's a possibility, but if we can get that work done here tonight, I think it's better for them. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Sure. No, this is why we're actually having a wonderful debate, discussion. So this is really great. Councilor Ferrulo?
I just want to add on to, to, Jessica Wetzel was awesome. Her special needs, that's awesome. Um, something we missed on Joe Daley, haven't missed, but he also has been committed to the youth of the city. He's coached everything that needed to be coached forever. Um, and, you know, I struggle with the same three that you guys are struggling with.
Anybody else? Yeah, President Concanon?
Couple comments. I'm, I'm listening to everyone's thoughts and opinions. I'm on the same page with you. Uh, it's funny, we put out these, uh, postings, these requests for interest and we always get these great candidates come back and you always wish there were 10 more vacancies so that everyone who steps up here and says, "I want to help our city," gets a chance to help our city. Uh, and I think, Jeff, you mentioned it earlier during the process, you know, if, if you don't get this one, you know, please keep your interest up and keep your eyes open for other opportunities and, and as should we do that as well and, and the mayor, um, with all the appointments that he has. Um, all six of these people would be an asset to any of our commissions or boards. I think all six of them would be an asset, uh, to the Recreation Commission. I'm glad they all applied. I'm glad we got a chance to meet them and hear, uh, what they have, what they have to say. Um, being that this is Woburn and most of us grew up here and we know everyone, uh, I know most of these people. I have personal experience with, with most of them. And the couple that I don't have as much personal experience, they impressed me immensely tonight. I wish I had. Um, you know, I, I know Bobby Campbell. He grew up with my son. He was at my house all the time. They played ball together. I know how committed he is. He's a teacher at the high school. I see him up there at parent teachers. You know, uh, Joe Daley coached my kids. My kids played with him, uh, with his kids. I've known him my whole life. Bill McGraw's in the Lions Club with me. He's a phenomenal guy. These are all spectacular people. Uh, Steve Scalise cleans the ice where one of my kids skated for what seems like 47 years straight. Um, Christopher Glazer, I know of him. I don't know him that well. I know the family, committed to Woburn, longtime Woburnites, certainly, uh, still wants to help, uh, uh, you know, in any way he can, which is great. And again, back to Ms. Wetzel, uh, I think I may have met her a couple of times around town. Thoroughly impressive tonight. Someone we want to have involved in our city. She's got a lot to offer, um, and, and the energy is, is amazing. So we have six phenomenal candidates. Any one of them would do a great job. Um, I guess I agree with Darlene that, you know, aside from, from Dicky, we're all here now. Um, you know, we, we should probably just try to see what we can do about getting down to, uh, a, a candidate so that we don't have to put them through, uh, any more than they have to. Um, so I, I would, I would urge that we do the same thing. Those are my thoughts.
Do, do you think that just helped us, what you said?
Well, I, I would like to have somebody...
I'll get the ball rolling if you want, City Council Campbell. I'm going to nominate Jessica and, um, Joe Daley to start off.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
On the motion?
Well, let's just, yeah. So this is just, yeah, wait a minute.
For, for, for right now, my, my motion is to nominate those two candidates for discussion, to narrow it down.
Yeah, I, okay, yes.
Yeah, on the motion, I think, I think that would be a good idea that we whittle it down to...
Yeah.
Two finalists and then restart the discussion.
Could I ask if you'd consider withdrawing your motion in your second? Perhaps we maybe move the other way and, and, and not with any disrespect intended, but with the, with the idea of saying, let's, let's put one or two or three aside and focus on others. Instead of saying two, maybe, um, you know, may, maybe we work it the other way. Just a thought.
In what way? President Concanon?
Eliminate rather...
Rather than go right to two, maybe we, maybe we go to four. Eliminate two and go to four and whittle it down that way. Just a thought. Cause when you go right to two, there's a couple of people I wish you hadn't excluded right out of the gate. That's all.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw my second. Can I agree with that?
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I'd like to just go to three. I, I don't think there's any reason, most of us have talked about three candidates that seem to stand out and we all seem to agree with that. So could I have a motion on that three to discuss the three?
I'll make a motion for Jessica, Joe Daley and Mr. Campbell.
I will second that.
In the running.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're down to three. Uh, Jessica Wetzel, uh, Joseph Daley and Robert Campbell.
Chairman Campbell?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, could we perhaps use this opportunity to, um, nominate someone the way we did when, um, Councilor DeMers came in, when Councilor Ferrulo, Ferrulo came in? We just did a round robin, right? What's that?
Can we get it down under 58 votes?
Yes, I think we probably...
I like that idea.
Um, so I, I'll start, I'll start the ball rolling. I'm going to nominate Jessica. And I believe we're going to go around the room. Is that how we're going to do it?
Yeah.
John Daley? Joe Daley, thank you.
I'll go with, uh, Jessica Wetzel.
Lou?
I'm going with Joe Daley.
Okay.
What number are we working towards?
What?
Just a majority coming out of the committee.
Majority. I guess we should have gone in order, but that's okay. Uh, President Concanon? We'll just go in the roll.
I'm going to say Bobby Campbell.
Robert Campbell.
Jessica Wetzel?
Joe Daley.
Okay, where are we at?
I, I, you went too fast. Uh, Joanne, could you repeat what you said?
I said Jessica Wetzel.
And Councilor Ferrulo?
Joe Daley.
So I have one, two, three votes for Wetzel, three for Daley and two for Campbell.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion to whittle it down to two now? Or do we want to just keep going around the room?
Try it one more time?
I say we go through it one more time.
Okay, we'll start with...
Uh, why don't we go in alphabetical order? That would probably make more sense. Would it?
And you would, you would be last because you're the committee chairman.
That's fine.
But I don't know the, I, I would have to take a minute to do the alphabet.
Okay, then never mind. We'll, I'm sorry, then we'll go...
Just start with you.
Yeah, we'll just start with you, Lou.
The easiest would be start with Councilor DeMambro and go around the room and then you would be last.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
You're the chairman.
Sure. Okay, Lou.
Is that all right with you?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure. Lou?
Uh, my vote's for Joe Daley at this point.
Darlene?
Jessica.
Joe Daley.
Jessica Wetzel.
Mike?
You go, hold, can you just slow down for a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're just going too fast.
Yep, sorry about that.
You were...
Uh, we had Daley, Jessica, Joe and Jessica.
No, I'm, I'm caught up. Thank you.
Yep.
Joe Daley.
Robert Campbell.
Joe Daley.
Um, Jessica Wetzel.
I thought we narrowed it down to, oh, we didn't.
So I have, I have, I... You have three for Jessica, four for Joe and one for Bob. Jeff, what was your, who, you were Daley, right?
Joe Daley.
So I have Daley, I'm sorry. One, two, three, four for Daley, one, two, three for Wetzel and one for Campbell.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I have four for Daley. I have three votes for Wetzel and one for Campbell. I have, um, Councilor DeMambro, Councilor Dillon, Councilor Concanon and Councilor Ferrulo for Daley. I have Counselor Mercer Bruin. I have Counselor DeMers and I have Counselor Campbell for Ms. Wetzel and I, for, uh, Mr. Viola, uh, Councilor Viola for Mr. Campbell.
He said four Daley.
What's that?
Okay.
Need five for a majority.
No, I know. But we are, to, to, yes, but to move, okay, never mind.
So Chairman Campbell, you want to go another round?
The numbers are moving, so we should try another round.
I'm going to go another ballot.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So another, another ballot?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Councilor DeMambro?
Joe.
Councilor Mercer Bruin?
Jessica.
Councilor Dillon?
Joe Daley.
Councilor DeMambro, uh, Councilor DeMers, I'm sorry.
Joe Daley.
Councilor Concanon?
Joe Daley.
Councilor Viola?
Jessica Wetzel.
Councilor Ferrulo?
Joe Daley.
Chairman Campbell?
Jessica, Jessica Wetzel?
So I have five votes for Mr. Daley and three votes for Ms. Wetzel.
So maybe somebody should make a motion to make it unanimous for Joe Daley?
We're still coming out of committee here, right?
No.
We're still have Dicky at the full council.
You can take your vote back.
I think that's where a unanimous might be...
Oh, sorry, President Concanon.
I'll make a motion that...
Hang on one second. Do you want to reconsider your vote?
What, what's happening?
I'll make a, I'll say...
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the name of Joseph Daley be sent back to the City Council.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's 8-0.
Were we waiting for the opinion?
So the eight members of the committee as a whole have sent out one name to the full council.
Got you.
Be appointed.
Yeah. And then the full council will deal with that committee report.
You do? You have an answer?
Plausible.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.